Okay, good morning, everybody, and welcome to our weekly board session. It's Wednesday, May 14th, 2025. We're here in the Center Hearing Room, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. As always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We don't have anybody signed up for public comment, so our first item of business is to consider approval of proclamation designated in May 14th, 2025, that's today, as Facilities Management Day in Marion County. Good morning, Tamara.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Tamara Getch, Director of Business Services, and very fortunate to be joined today by many of our facility management team members. Today, across the world, is a recognition of facility coworkers and folks that do construction, custodial, maintenance, and capital projects throughout our nation and beyond, really helping to make sure that our facilities in Marion County are able to provide the services to our department as well as to our constituents across the county. I'm very fortunate to be able to work alongside these men and women that we have on staff at Marion County. They work tirelessly. This, without a doubt, is probably the most conscientious, hardworking crew that I've had since coming to Business Services. I can count on them, without question, to do things right, to do things that are sometimes hard or difficult, to consider the county's needs and how we can better serve our public. Today, we are presenting to you a proclamation to recognize their efforts and to honor their chosen career in facilities. I also just want to mention Terry Stoner. This will be his last Facilities Management Recognition Day. He does not like fanfare, but too bad. He is our facilities manager. We have a team of folks who work on our capital projects, as well as working with departments and meeting their individual needs. We have a custodial team, which we have two representatives with us today that help us every single day make sure that we have clean, safe, and presentable properties coming forward. We have our grounds crew here, and we have numerous members of our maintenance team. There are folks who are still out there taking care of business this morning, and some are in training as well. So, without further ado, I present the proclamation for your consideration.
Thank you, Tamara. Commissioner Cameron?
Well, I just want to say this, and thank you for all that you all do. And I know, being in the restaurant business all my life until a couple of years ago, thank God, I'm out of that. I used to always remember to tell our managers that the most important person in the restaurant was the dishwasher. And they'd say, "Well, why do you say that? Because if you stop washing dishes, the whole place goes crazy." And, I mean, we're all as important, but everybody in this room, and that's not in this room, is extremely important behind the scenes. And I know you take good care of us. Our facilities look clean. Really proud. I know when I got here 10 and a half years ago, you know, we've built a lot. We have done a lot in buildings and leaving the county better than what we founded for the hands of the citizens that work and live here and play here. It's just been an honor to serve with everybody in the room. Thank you, Tamara, for pointing that out.
Yeah, I love seeing the back there, all of our friends. I just want to say thank you for your work and for the spirit with which you do your work. I remember being a little kid, and at my school, the facilities manager was a guy named Mr. Drozdeck, and he had escaped from behind the iron curtain, you know, when it fell. And he was so happy every day, and he was so good to us kids, and he always smelled like cigarettes. And I remember, I remember just like, I looked forward to seeing him every day. And what an important kind of part of my experience as a kid going to school was his presence. And I've said this before, I remember being here late at night and hearing one of our facilities folks singing as they were doing their work. And I just think the spirit with which you bring to this county really matters, and so super grateful for that.
And I love this day because Tammy made really good burritos, huh? Isn't that great? In here in time.
Hey, I was early for burritos.
So Archie might smell like burritos.
Yeah, I don't smell like cigarettes, but I smell like burritos. And Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve proclamation designating May 14th, 2025, as Facilities Management Day in Marion County.
I second the motion. We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes.
All right, I will read the proclamation. In a matter of proclaiming May 14th, 2025, as Facilities Management Day in Marion County. Proclamation. This matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on May 14th, 2025. Whereas, facilities management is a crucial strategic business discipline which integrates people, places, and processes within a built environment with the purpose of improving the quality of life for people and the productivity of the core business. And whereas, World Facility Management Day aims to recognize the efforts of the facility management profession, anywhere that facility management professionals influence the health, safety, productivity, and well-being of people who utilize the built environment and...
Whereas, facility management professionals, whether government or private sector, continually learn about and implement best practices to keep facilities open and maintained in a safe manner. And whereas, we are grateful for the contributions that facility management professionals make daily to infrastructure and the safety of Marion County residents and our economy. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Marion County Board of Commissioners asks everyone to join together and thank Marion County Facilities Management Professionals who serve these roles throughout our county, proclaim May 14th, 2025, as Facilities Management Day. Day to Salem, Oregon, this 14th day of May, 2025. All right, now you all have to come up for a picture.
All right. Come on, guys, gals, let's go. This includes folks in facilities.
Come on, Terry. You gotta get the photo one last time.
Well, probably not the last.
One of them. Turn in towards Terry.
Come on in.
Turn in towards Terry.
Come on, please. Come on in. Yeah, yeah, sure.
You get us all, John?
Can you squeeze in closer? Can you have some...
We're friends again, so squeeze in, squeeze in, squeeze in.
You stand.
Three, two, one.
Thank you.
I have a meeting this morning, I'll open up for burritos. Which one of you guys smell like cigarettes? Thank you, Terry.
That's a good one. It smells like cigarettes.
It's one of the things you remember, huh?
Well, yeah, I remember the odors of my grandparents' house when I was a kid.
Yeah. All right. If you're ready, Commissioner Cameron, I'll take a...
Mr. Chair, I'll move the consent calendar. First item is under Business Services to approve an order authorizing Marion County Board of Commissioners, Vice Chair, to sign the termination agreement of the acquisition of property located at 2020 37th Avenue, Northeast Salem, Oregon. Under Health and Human Services, approve Amendment Number 11 to the incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority to add $200,000 for MHS-04 Aid and Assist Client Services for a new contract total of $23,807,427.77 through June 30th, 2025. Under Human Services, forward to the 2025-26 Marion County Budget Committee, the 2025 Elected Officials Compensation Recommendations. Under Public Works, receive a notice of the hearings officers' decision approving conditional use, case number 24-043 MK1 Construction LLC. Also, under Public Works, approve a resolution to initiate consideration of amendments to clarify the applicability of the existing code provisions relating to the battery, energy, storage systems in Marion County, urban and rural zone codes, Chapter 1617, and Marion County Planning Director to schedule a public hearing to receive testimony on proposed amendment. Under the Sheriff's Office, approve Amendment Number 6 to the contract for services with Trinity Services Group, Inc., to add $261,019.28 to a new, for a new contract total of $8,228,205.58 to continue to provide food services to the Marion County Jail and Stabilization Center through June 30th, 2026. And finally, under the Tax Office, approve orders for a property tax refund for the following tax accounts. Heron Crossing LLC account number 327912 in the amount of $43,027.77. Also, Heron Crossing LLC account number 327913 in the account, in the amount of $33,132.28. And OGSC Macy's LLC account 589030 in the amount of $29,953.29.
And I will second the motion. We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, just a potential conflict of interest for us on the item under Human Resources.
Oh, okay. I will also note a potential conflict.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Okay. Commissioner Cameron?
Oh, good.
Okay, let's see. Ryan's here. We are going to consider approval of the incoming funds grant agreement with the Oregon Health Authority, the amount of $2,937,125, to support a capital investment project for renovations at the Marion County Behavioral Health Crisis Center through December 31st, 2025. Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Ryan Matthews, Administrator with Marion County Health and Human Services. And I am excited to be here today for an incoming funds contract of a little over 2.9 million. Just for some background, this was a solicitation that happened actually last spring, so it was March 2024. I went back because I knew it'd been a long time in the works. So, back in March 2024, the state of Oregon put out a $50 million grant application for shovel-ready projects to help bolster the residential bed capacity across the state. In reviewing that grant application, we identified that crisis stabilization centers were a qualifying entity that the funds could be used for, so we submitted a grant because we had previously purchased a new crisis center. But during the process of getting prepared to renovate that, we identified some pretty significant costs and some pretty significant work that needed to be done before we could occupy it. So, right around the time that this grant application opened, we had put together our capital project cost, which was a little over 2.9 million. We had worked with an architectural firm on the design of the building, and, you know, and so we had a shovel-ready project, and we decided to go through the grant application process, and we're excited to be awarded the 2.9 million. Since then, there's been a lot of meetings where there's reviews of the actual architectural renderings, and you get feedback from OHA in terms of making sure it still qualifies for the funds that were available. And so it's taken a long time to get here. That's where I don't, I was kind of thinking shovel-ready projects, but, you know, you get the funding 15 months later. You know, it's an interesting process, but we are excited. We are currently, the work is being done on this facility. We are still scheduled to open later this calendar year, and we are on schedule and on track for that. And so we're really excited that these funds are finally able to be received to help cover the costs that we're currently incurring to renovate the crisis stabilization center. And we're going to be really thrilled when we're able to open later this year. I know it'll be a much better facility for our community and where we can provide critical mental health crisis services, substance use services, and really just be a resource for our community for those in need. So, with hoping to get your approval to accept these funds.
Any questions, Commissioner Cameron?
Yeah, Ryan, thank you for the information you provided for me the other day that I'm going to be going to at Salem Health. And one of the comments that was in there was the ability for them just to walk over or us to walk over. But how is, just kind of off the topic of this, but how is our new crisis center going to interact in that same way? Do they have to get in the car, obviously, and drive them? Is that...
Yeah, I mean, luckily, we're not too far away. You know, it's a pretty quick, you know, hop over to the hospital. But you're right, we'll have to arrange transportation, whether it's our staff that goes to the hospital, or whether, you know, they're having individuals, you know, dropped off at our crisis center. So it will change the relationship slightly. I mean, our goal is still to be a great partner, to make sure that people are not going to the emergency department that don't need to, and that we're there to help sort of offload as many of those individuals as possible. But, you know, there's no replacing being right there on the same campus. Unfortunately, they just didn't have the space for us to be able to grow in the way we needed to grow to serve our community, but still reside there. So, we will be, you know, continuing to work on our partnership with Salem Health and making sure that we're able to provide those needed services. But yeah, there will be, there will be more transportation. It won't be quite the warm handoff or walk across the parking lot. But I do think that the fact that it is so closely located, I think, won't end up being a significant hindrance.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, one thing I just, I think, I'd be remiss if I didn't kind of give a shout-out to you and your team. Something that the folks at home may not always know is this is not an infrequent occurrence for the state to say, "Congratulations, you got this money." And then the reality is, we have to start spending money and doing work before the money from the state actually shows up. And I think if your team wasn't as organized and as diligent as they are, and I know there are a lot of small local governments who are in this position, they just say, "Sorry, we can't do it. We can't afford to wait 15 months to get the money to this project." And it's something that the state really needs to look at is, you know, are they actually enabling small local governments to partner with them effectively? Or are they only basically able to partner with agencies that kind of have the resources that we do? Either way, it's a credit to you and your team that you made this project move forward despite the lag in receiving the funding.
Thank you, yeah. Well, and I know we recognized our finance department earlier, sorry, Facilities Department earlier, and, I mean, they were great partners through this as well, and really, we wanted to make sure these were parallel processes. We didn't want to wait for the grant and the contract process to delay, you know, us being able to open our new crisis stabilization center. So, they were able to work with us and keep, help us keep that project moving and going forward. And I think to your point, I mean, I think it really speaks to, because these grants are available also to the private sector. And when you start thinking about, you know, private entrepreneurship and building businesses, people can't really float multiple millions of dollars when they're expecting government funds to come in. So it does sort of speak to a statewide problem that if we want to solve a lot of the crises that we're seeing around communities, like, we've got to figure out a process that, you know, breaks down some of that rent tape and gets the money to where it needs to be quicker so that people can make those investments and build that capacity.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you. All right, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the incoming funds grant agreement with the Oregon Health Authority in the amount of $2,937,37,125, to support the capital investment project for renovations at Marion County Behavioral Health Crisis Center through December 31st, 2025.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you, Ryan. All right, Carol, you're up next. And we're going to consider approval of Amendment Number 1, the contract for services with Nathaniel Kravitz, $275,000, for a new contract total of $675,000, to continue to provide skilled medical assessment and psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner services to Marion County Health and Human Services clients through June 30th, 2027. Good morning.
Good morning. For the record, Carol Hurd, Addiction Treatment Services Division Director with Marion County Health and Human Services. And I am here today requesting approval for an amendment to the contract for services with Nathaniel Kravitz, as you stated, a psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner with our adult behavioral health program. If approved, this amendment would extend our current contract by two years with a new expiration date of June 30th, 2027, and a new not-to-exceed amount of $675,000. Under this contract, Nate will continue to provide skilled medical assessments and ongoing supervision of individuals who need behavioral health medications for symptom management as part of their individual service plan. This contract also, it is a contract for up to 21 hours per week where he meets individually with our adult behavioral health clients. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, Commissioner?
I don't think so. I think we did this at management update.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, good. If you're ready?
Thank you, Carol, I'm ready.
All right. Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve Amendment Number 1 to contract for services with Nathaniel Kravitz...
Nathaniel.
Nathaniel Kravitz, to add $275,000 for a new contract total of $675,000, to continue to provide skilled medical assessment and psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner services to Marion County Health and Human Services through June 30th, 2027.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carol.
Thanks.
Okay, Ryan, you're up. I was going to say, this is the Ryan Show for the rest of the day, but it's not. It's not. Chris is going to back clean up.
Chris has a turn as well.
There you go.
All right, good morning. For the record, Ryan Cruther, Marion County Public Works. And today, I'm here first to talk to you about our North Fork Road slide stabilization, an amendment four to the contract with Dowell, which is our engineering consultant. So for those that don't know, North Fork Road is located east of Salem. The project is between mileposts 4.9 and 5.5 in the gravel section where that active slide has been moving for years. We are looking at stabilizing one of three slides that exist within that section. All right, the larger project scope includes stabilizing that slide with what's called a sheer key buttress. That is a significant amount of large rock where we'll excavate a portion of the slide, put that rock in, and it will actually key into stable ground and hold the hillside in place. So you can see a schematic of that. Currently, we've done our geotechnical analysis, project design, and looked at our estimates. We're finalizing our environmental permits and starting our right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation. With that, our project construction won't start until next summer, but folks will see utilities go out and start relocating this summer, so there will be crews on the ground. They just won't be with Marion County. They'll be with Consumer Power or some of the other utilities. So, the contract scope with Dowell, with this amendment, will add construction oversight. What we're looking at is this is a specialized project, so we want to bring them on to perform project management, engineer of record services, contract administration. A big one is inspection. We want an inspector that is very familiar with work of this size and scope, and so they have that with the consultant. They can work closely with their engineers. They would do our monthly progress estimates, quality control monitoring, and various other tasks that are required to supplement our staff during construction. Project budget, so the net increase to this contract is $615,162.4 for a total contract with Dowell of $1,797,174.84. So I did also include the federal grant. As you can see, the total, including county match, is almost $11.5 million. So this is a very significant project, and the county match is only $1,070,422. As I discussed earlier, our project schedule includes finalizing design and right-of-way this summer, bidding the project in the fall to begin construction in spring of 2026. We do want to give contractors time to really prepare for this, so we want to bid early and allow them to schedule it, crush the rock that's needed, and get out there and complete the work on schedule. And with that, do you have any questions?
Any questions, Commissioner?
Yeah, not the specific, about the specific, Ryan, but I think it was Monday I was coming down the mountain to work, and right there at the North Fork Road, I saw a couple of our trucks and a big, big, huge piece of equipment. Are we already doing some work up there on the road or slide or anything? They were getting ready to head up, looked like to head up North Fork.
Were they Marion County trucks?
Two of the smaller trucks were, and then there was a big, huge, like, loader on the back of a truck that, I don't know, so maybe, I didn't stop, but...
I was going to say, I would guess that's our operation group. They do a lot of work up there, whether it's with the parks or in the right-of-way. There is a number of things going on. I'm not familiar with what they're doing right now, but I do know they're actively working on the corridor.
All right, thank you. Ready?
I'm ready.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve Amendment Number 4 to the engineering-related service contract with Dowell LLC to add $615,162.4, of which an estimated $551,984.90 will utilize federal funding, and an estimated $63,177.14 will utilize county funding for the new contract total of $1,797,174.84 to provide construction engineering and inspection service for the North Fork Slide Stabilization Project through December 31st, 2028.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you, Ryan. But you are still here. You're not going anywhere.
Nope, I've got one more.
All right, why don't you tell us about it?
All right, again, for the record, Ryan Cruther, Marion County Public Works. And now I'm here to talk to you about our yearly resurfacing contract and the contract with North Santiam Paving. So you can see here on the project map, these are the roads we're paving this summer. They're primarily around Mount Angel, just northeast of the city of Salem. The roads, because it's small on the map, include McKee School Road, Monitor McKee Road, 114th Street, 114th Avenue, Way Park Drive, West Church, Saratoga, Hook Road, and North Howell Road. So our construction plan includes doing isolated pavement repairs. We also have included a scrub seal base layer on two of our roadways to really stabilize those before we go in and overlay them. That's just an additional method of making sure that we get a little bit more life out of those roadways. It's similar to a chip seal, and so it'll go, and it's meant to really bind the road together. We also are doing base lift and top lift paving, replacing guardrails that is in need of replacement near bridges and other areas, doing any striping that's required, shoulder rock, and then all the rest of the miscellaneous work that comes with a project of this size. We received four bids on the project, the low bid being received from North Santiam Paving at $3,902,349.68. This is a county-funded project. Our resurfacing contract each year, we use county funds to do this, and the schedule includes completing the work, assuming that it is approved today between May and September of this year. And with that, do you have any questions?
Any questions, Commissioner?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. Ryan, just to clarify, you say county funds, this is county road funds, right?
County road funds, correct.
This is our portion of the gas tax that comes back to Marion County that we use to match other projects with, but this is 100% funded with our gas tax dollars.
That is, that's correct, yes.
Thank you for those of you that go to the gas pump and put gas in your car and pay for this.
Love that picture.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, that was a contractor who paved for us a few years ago, and it's great to see everybody out there.
Yeah. I also know, I've heard from several folks in the Mount Angel area, they're excited, they heard about this. They heard that Marion County has come to their neck of the woods, and they're pretty excited about this work, so.
Good.
You're going to have a warm welcome, I'm sure.
That's always nice.
All right. Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve a contract, a construction contract with North Santiam Paving in the amount of $3,902,349.68 to provide asphalt and concrete resurfacing for various Marion County roads through September 30th, 2026.
I second the motion. We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes.
Just really quick, it said concrete, too. Asphalt and concrete. Do we have any concrete?
So, it's, no, just asphalt.
Next up, we're going to consider approval of a guaranteed maximum price amendment to the construction manager, general contractor, contractors, laden contractors, to add American Rescue Plan Act funding in the not-to-exceed amount of $32,958,791 for a new contract total of $37,538,603 for construction of the North Santiam Canyon Sewer Project through December 31st, 2026. Welcome, Chris.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Chris Einmo, Senior Project Manager, Marion County Public Works. Yeah, so this is a very significant milestone in the North Santiam Canyon Sewer Project. Yeah, so this is a very significant milestone in the North Santiam Canyon Sewer Project. It is the construction amendment to really build the treatment plant in Mill City. So since it's such an important milestone, I just want to take a beat to acknowledge the significance of the project. This has been going on for a long time, obviously, as everyone in this room knows, it's critical to the rebuilding efforts for those in the fire-affected areas, many of which we've started to work with very closely over the course of this project. It's critical for being able to see that critical housing development in Mill City, but also in the city of Gates with a planned collection system and interconnect in the future, which will allow fire victims in Gates to rebuild where they currently cannot because of lack of room for septic systems. And obviously, such a large investment, as, well, sorry, should say, it seems like a large investment until one considers the economic importance of the river itself. These wastewater treatment plants are the first line of defense for all rivers throughout the United States, and this is a major upgrade that will protect the quality of the river, which is the water supply for the cities of Salem and Staten and communities surrounding that, as well as the importance of the river to recreation and its importance to the tribal entities throughout Oregon. The support of all of which, and their involvement of all these stakeholders, has been critical in getting us to this point. And just, this is kind of at the, we're at the critical stage in a project that started a long time ago. Since 1996 is when the first feasibility study was done. That's right about the exact same time that the existing Mill City Treatment Plant was built as a, what was a temporary Band-Aid 30 years ago to provide treatment until this project could be done. That plant is now at the end of its usable life, so replacing it has become critical. And this project, I'll just acknowledge that this project all started with a student project in 2017 that led to the formation of the North Santiam Sewer Authority, the creation of master plans, which resulted in the state's investment of $50 million in American Rescue Plan Act funding to make this project a reality. So just want to take a moment to acknowledge all the work that Danielle Gonzalez did throughout her project to get this ball rolling and take a moment to realize where we've come. The project needs to be constructed by the end of 2026 in order to meet the American Rescue Plan Act funding deadlines. So it is a very aggressive schedule to build a very complex treatment plant, that's why we've utilized the CMGC delivery method. And our shared interest with the county, I'm sorry, our shared interest with the contractor is in getting the project built on time and under budget, or else it doesn't happen. So with that, they prepared a guaranteed maximum price amendment proposal that we've negotiated with them. So this project, in order to meet that ARPA deadline, we need construction to start in June, and we've already closed on the property, and we've just received our 1,200 C stormwater permit this morning, in fact, so that we are cleared to start construction once the contract is, amendment is signed. The existing plant will be replaced with this new plant, we are at a, we call it a 90% design stage where the, where the the real heart of the design work is done, we're simply making small changes, adjustments, and that design will be completed at the end of this month, so we'll have 100% design. It's replacing a very simple plant that doesn't, it doesn't have primary treatment, so it's not capable of receiving raw waste. Everybody has to have a, kind of a septic tank on their yard that pumps out to a, to a shared drain field. And we're replacing that with a plant with primary, secondary, and tertiary treatment. So the primary treatment is what allows us to accept the raw waste, separate the sludge, kind of dry it and haul it away, that takes away most of the contaminants. But then secondary treatment is what makes it a real modern plant that can take out nitrogen and other nutrients, protects against algae blooms, protects against lack, protects against the loss of oxygen in the river, so it's very important to aquatic life. And we also have tertiary treatment, which not all modern plants have. I won't dork out about that too much, I promise, but it's ultraviolet disinfection and some bio sand filters to remove additional nitrogen. So this is really a high-tech and very advanced, very effective plant at making that affluent, very clean before it's then discharged to the groundwater. So for delivering such a complex plant like this on aggressive timelines, the GMB process includes a lot of costs, but there are controls on all those different costs. I'm just bringing this up to show the difference between this and a typical, typical bid project just involves that one line where it says general construction competitive bid, that's where one, that's where one contractor kind of bids to do everything. In this case, the, the CMGC that we hired in their construction manager role actually takes all the different components of the project and then takes most of them and then puts them out for bid as individual bid packages. And in this case, we had 50 different bid packages that were publicly advertised. Each one, the contractor reviewed the bids for completeness, submitted them to us, we did our review, and then chose the lowest bid on that, so we have a very complex price control structure to get the best price on each component. But there are also additional work that's done in the CMGC process. So we have what's called self-performance as part of that overall cost. That's the work that the CMGC can do themselves. For remote, more remote projects, that's normally a pretty small number. In this case, because Slaton Constructors is right here in Salem, they were able to do about 18% of it themselves. But it's a lot of, you know, the general work, like the earthwork, paving, laying yard piping. So to do that work, we use what's called open book negotiation, where all the rates, the labor rates are known, those are actually dictated by the federal funding in this case. So everything is done at either the bully rate or the Davis Bacon rate, whichever is higher, that's mandatory for a federal project of this size. So the labor rates are known, the equipment rates are known based on independent, equipment rates, what we call book rate. And then the materials that they use in that are also put out to bid, so those are part of the bid packages we released. Then most of that work, actually about 60% of it, as I mentioned, 60% of the cost was done under those subcontracted bid work. So everything from the electrical, the piping, the pipe supports, everything down to the guardrails on the basin were put out to bid and publicly advertised. The management, as well as the administration, things like certified payroll, safety programs, those are done under the rates that were previously negotiated when we first signed the pre-construction contract two years ago. Those rates are fixed, so they'll continue through the project. And then just fees, bonds, and insurance are already in the contract as well. So after the contractor submits this guaranteed maximum price package to us, we had our own independent cost estimator that we hired to review everything they submitted. They performed a detailed labor study to make sure that the amount of hours that are inherent in the contract, everything is in line with industry standards. You know, how many hours does it take to build this many square feet of concrete, and so on, so forth. They also did a study on the amount of supporting admin and management, looking at the different components of the work and how many hours go into each one, and compared those to the equipment hours. They did a detailed study on the equipment cost itself, and then they reviewed all 50 RFPs that were sent out, as well as all the bids responding to each one of those. Did a detailed review on all of those to make sure everything is in line with industry norms and using best practices. And that was part of the ongoing negotiation process, which arrived at the final proposal. Just to recap some previous amendments to this, when we first signed the pre-construction contract, that was for the phase where they would be part of the design process all the way through, so they would attend our engineering design meetings, work with the engineers to develop cost estimates that were changing as the project design changed, working with us on value engineering, basically moving towards the shared goal of how do we build this on time, under budget, meeting all the specifications that are required of the plant. Then as we went through, there were a lot of long lead items and some construction support, so we had a small amendment for them to do support for us. They were, they were essential in helping us do the pilot study on site and the early equipment of those long lead items, so the actual reactor itself, as well as some of the big electrical items, like the generators, the PLCs, those things have like an 18-month lead time right now. So we put those out to bid early. Those are really the only ones where we used a best value analysis. That's where, instead of simply taking the lowest price item, we look at the holistic cost of the project. You know, one item might be a little cheaper, but then we have to build more concrete to support it, and so it has a net higher impact. So we did that analysis and looked at the best value to the project. Not much of that was used in the final GMP project because the big items were already there, but that was the other method we used for procurement selection. All of, so all of that work that was reviewed, all the bid packages, all the self-performance proposals, as well as small line item allowances for items that were not yet fully designed, go into the line that says new treatment plant. So that's the estimated cost of the work. And that's $26 million is the final number we arrived at. That means that, since it's a guaranteed maximum price proposal, the cost to build will go no higher. It may be lower as certain allowances are not fully utilized, just because we were doing this at a 90% design, not a final design. And then we have some additional line item allowances that were, that were more general to the project, so that's where those are called out separately on the summary. One is a design evolution allowance, that's just because we're not, we're not fully designed yet. It is a small allowance to adjust to any, any changes that come in through the final permitting review. We have an allowance to account for the possible escalation of tariffs, that's a, just since it's a changing condition, we used the total materials on the job and multiplied that by 10%. So that's just, that is an allowance, it's not automatic, the material suppliers have to submit proof of the increase to their cost. And so that's just for any potential escalation due to tariffs that were not, not in place at the time the materials were bid. We also have just a small scope addition of $500,000. That was our addition to perform some infiltration and inflow improvements in the Mill City sewer system. We've been working with Mill City on the, on the amount of work that remains to do that, it's just running cameras and doing some small sewer repairs. So they've asked us to include that in the contract, it's a small allowance that fits within the budget, and they are actually contributing their, part of their ARPA award back to the project to do that. And then contingency is always carried on this, the contingency is just, it's a small percentage that is there to, to deal with unknown risks. 5% is kind of standard at this phase, but because they've been so involved, they've reduced it down to 4.5%. So that comes down to the, the total contract value less the fees, bonds, and insurance is $29,900,000. And then with the additional fees that are all part of the contract, so the negotiated fee that was signed in the original contract, as well as insurance, bonds, risks, and corporate tax, that arrives at the GMP amendment value of $32,958,791. So that, that cost plus the previous amendments to the contract bring us to a contracted value of $37,500,000. Just to pause and acknowledge how that's changed throughout the project, when we first did the engineer's estimate before the CMGC was involved, the engineer's full delivery cost of the treatment plant was estimated at $40,500,000. A year later, we took the design when we were at what we call 50% design. That's where, we still had some unknowns in the design, but we had a general concept of what the plant would look like, all of its components. Estimate came down about $500,000. And then between then and May, we did additional value engineering work, we found opportunities for savings. One of the biggest savings that the CMGC found was the ability to set up a gravel plant on site and generate, generate our aggregate from some of the large boulders that we're taking out of the ground. So instead of having to truck in all that gravel, so it saved us about $1 million in trucking costs and some additional savings in the export cost. There have been various savings throughout the project, so our final number is about $2.5 million less than projected.
Can you go back, sorry, Chris?
Sure.
At the bottom there, what does that asterisk say?
Oh, sorry, so that was, when I quoted the engineer's estimate of $40,500,000, that was part of an overall larger estimate they did for both phases of the project, and when they estimated the inclusion of the Gates collection system and the interconnect, as well as the plant. The total estimate that's shown in the facility plan is $66,731,000.
Okay. And, and that second phase, that Gates collection, there's some uncertainty around the cost of that, right?
It is, because it's not fully designed yet. So that one was stopped at about a 30% design, which is conceptual, we're still modeling, looking at the depth of sewers, so that number will change and very likely decrease slightly as we continue design.
Okay, thank you.
So the project schedule, I mean, we are still on, but it is, it is, of course, very tight just because of the nature of ARPA deadlines. So we are at the point where if we start construction in June, we anticipate having substantial completion on construction by November, which gives us just, you know, 30 days to wrap up billing and punch list, completing it in December. We would also be commissioning the plant prior to final construction. So commissioning means starting to bring the different components of it online, first cycling clean water through the plant, as well as having the Mill City's operating team involved, starting to bring the equipment into operation and implementing the operation maintenance, all that is done while the final construction is still being done. And then, once the discharge permit is received, we can actually bring the reactor online and start taking in wastewater to actually do the final treatment. So that would mean that throughout that commissioning process, Slaton Constructors would be providing their own operators who specialize in commissioning plants, and then handing it over to Mill City gradually, so that by the end of the project, it goes into their, their own operation maintenance. So that would be starting in October. One of the reasons for the criticality of the schedule is we want to make sure we can meet that date and have adequate time to commission. Again, completing that process by November, so giving us 30 days to kind of wrap that up and finish billing. All of which gets us to a final expenditure of the ARPA funds by December, by the deadline. So just to clarify, this is all being done with external funds, there's no local match, so no county, no county funds are being used for this, we're simply acting as the contracting and pass-through agency. Once the plant is complete, it would be turned over to local ownership and operation. With that, again, at this very significant milestone, we're all very excited to see it happen. I'll pause, and if there are any questions about the GMP proposal?
Any questions, Commissioner Cameron?
Well, as Chris started, I wrote down so many things that we could share about this project. You know, you mentioned Danielle Gonzalez. I've always said, you know, I probably won't be alive when the first toilet flushes in Detroit, but I think I will be for the Gates and Mill City. The citizens that have served from those four cities on the committees, the hours and hours of time that they've put in to, to make this a possibility. And because of that, when the fires hit, you never want, I don't, I don't like to say this, but never waste a crisis, right? When the fires hit and we had all that bad stuff happen, and we went to the legislature and to get the $50 million of ARPA money for the canyon for septics and sewer system, that was a, I remember being online in my apartment here in Salem, because I couldn't live in my house, testifying, I remember testifying, sitting at the airport, all these meetings, I must say, hats off to Representative Clem and his committee that, that he chaired to help us get that money. And then the legal teams that we've had, our legal counsel, former legal counsel, the outside counsel that's helped us with the water issues. All, all the, just all the people that have, you know, come together, convened- just all the people that have, you know, come together, convened and tried to get to this point. And we still have some challenges in front of us. I mean, obviously, we're gonna start construction because we got a bill passed through the legislature at both houses and signed by the governor in, what, 30 days, 15 days, so you can start construction anytime you want, she signed it. But we have some challenges in front of us, and I think the biggest one is getting that rule amendment at DEQ, because what we're doing right now, this is great, we're gonna be able to put shovels in the dirt, pour concrete, and build a deal, but we still are not in a position to operate it yet. So we've still got that challenge in front of us, and I think you'll keep us posted, and legal counsel and the outside counsel will help us with that. I know that DEQ is moving forward at lightning snail speed, as they always do, I always call it lightning snail speed, but they are trying to work with us and get that done. I really appreciate DEQ and the leadership in the governor's office, so. Thank you, Chris, for this. Brian, I don't know if Brian's listening, but all the sweat and the long hours that you and Brian and others have put in to get us to this point where we can approve a, I don't even know what the amount was totaled, it's gonna be in my list here of 30, the new, we're gonna add $32 million, almost $33 million to a contract total of $38 million. It's a huge number, but there's gonna be a lot of benefit to the people who drink the water down here, the people who live up there, and it's, again, this time next year, hopefully, we've got the permit ready to go and we're running water through that thing, and so probably, what, the summer of '26, maybe, the first action would happen? What's your prediction?
Yeah, so probably in about August of 2026, according to the contractor's schedule, we can start clean water testing. For clarity, we don't need a discharge permit to run clean water because it's a closed loop.
Oh, it won't discharge, that's just checking pressures and leaks and all that kind of stuff?
Exactly, yeah, so that can run on a closed loop, and if we ever needed to, we would work for an overland application permit, just to get rid of, if we had to discharge clean water out of it, we wouldn't do that through the normal discharge.
Yeah.
Or we could actually send it to the old plant for processing.
Yeah.
Because it's far cleaner than what it normally takes in.
Yeah.
So we have those options, but once we actually bring the reactor biology live, it's a biological reactor that's gonna be fed out of Staton's plant, at that point, it goes live, we start to get the bugs active, that's where we need the new discharge permit.
Yeah.
And that would be roundabout September.
Well, thank you, thanks to everybody who's worked on this project, and we're not done yet, but it's, this is a great milestone to say, let's approve the contract.
I was just thinking, only in government do we congratulate ourselves on starting construction, and yet we should, right? Kevin literally had to get a bill passed through legislature just to allow us to stick a shovel in the ground, right? So I mean, I really don't wanna, I don't wanna make light of all the work, it really is a big deal to get us here.
But even in the private, I mean, even in the private sector, to do something, it's a challenge, right? I mean, all the moving parts.
This type of thing, yeah, well, certainly this type of thing, it's just hard, it's just hard, but it's so important for our communities, for them to be able to grow and...
Chris, when did you, when did you come on board?
A little over two years ago, so January of 2023.
Yeah, and I didn't write your name down specifically, but you've been just a blessing to Marion County and to this project, to see this thing going, and I know you're working on other stuff that we're not even talking about, you know, up in Detroit and things that you're working on, so thank you so much.
Yeah, been a huge asset to the team.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And it's a credit to you and Brian and the team to get us this far, because it really is a big accomplishment, and now we just sprint, we sprint through the construction of this thing, right? There's no, there's no other way to do it, we just have to do it fast, so.
All right, you ready?
Ready.
Dum da dum dum, all right, Mr. Chair, I will move that we approve a Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract with Slade and Constructors, Inc. to add American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding in the not-to-exceed amount of $32,958,958, $32,958,791 for a new contract total of $37,538,603 for the construction of the North Santiam Sewer Project through December 31st, 2026.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else? That's the end of our agenda, Commissioner Cameron.
Yeah.
Good job. Nothing else? Okay, then we are adjourned.